Good evening and welcome to the October 26, 2020 work session of Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have one discussion topic, and that is art in public places. We're going to get a briefing on what's going on and some, some new projects that were, that have been sort of on our radar screen for a bit. And to lead us in this, this discussion, we have Shelley Williams, who is our Cultural Events and Services Division Chief, and Shelley, take it away.
Thank you. Thank you and good evening. Thank you so much for having me speak with you tonight about the city's public art program. This presentation tonight is not a request for money, and it's not even a show and tell about our public art program, but it is an invitation to you to join me in imagining Gaithersburg's future and how we can harness the transformative power of public art to realize that future. So I am looking five, 10 years out. Other communities have successfully used public art to create destination, economic activity, and above all, identity. Gaithersburg can do that too, but it requires that we start thinking about it now and we start planning. And we're going to be looking tonight at some strategic steps that we can do when the economy returns to a more robust state and the immediate threat of COVID recedes. We will then be ready to act. But first, I'll just make sure we're all in agreement about what public art is. And next slide, please. So public art can be characterized this way. It's accessible to the public, meaning it's not on private land that you can't go to, or it's not in a place where you can't get to. Perhaps if you're disabled or something, you can't go upstairs. It's publicly funded, or it's developer funded. It's created by or led by professional artists, whether they're local, regional, or national. It can be sculpture, murals, mosaics, light art, site-specific installations, many, many different things. And it's art that's developed through a community engagement process. I think that's one of the things that I like to make sure that we understand tonight as we're looking at art that has a community component. Next. In Gaithersburg, the public art program is called Arts in Public Places, AIPP, and it was established in 1998. The first subcommittee was of the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, and they manage that. Now, the subcommittee and the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee are one, but they still continue to manage the public art. Next. So funding comes through the city's CIP public art budget. We get developer funds. There are grants. We have not actually applied for any, but we will be doing so shortly. And there are cash contributions. In 2017, we established an Art in Public Places Fund, and that year, we had several developers contribute to the fund, $31,000, in fact, because for various reasons, art was not appropriate to their site. It was either not public, or like Carvana, their entire building was sort of a public art project. The approval process begins with the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, who helped make selections for artists and make recommendations to the mayor council, but final approval all comes from mayor and council in the budget process. Next. So this is a map of where the public art is in the city. We have 28 installations on public and private property. Now, this is private property that is actually open to the public. The artists are regional, national, and international. We have 12 works that are owned by the city and on city property, and 16 works that are actually owned by the developer and on developer property. And you can actually see each artwork in a map on the city's website. Next. So why do we want to talk about public art? Why am I here tonight to ask you to spend some time and think about public art? And it's really because of the value public art brings to your community. Urban planners now use public art to create destination and strong identity, to create a sense of place. These enormous booths, they're humongous, they're 40 feet tall, are in San Antonio, and they help describe San Antonio as a place of the great, great west. As you can see from the quote here from the Public Art Network, "Cities and towns with strong public art expressions break the trend of blandness and sameness and give communities a stronger sense of place and identity." I'd like to use public art for Gaithersburg so that we can put a spotlight on our values, our people, and our quality of life here, as shown through public art. We've talked about the value of public art, but I'd also like to talk to you about the power of public art. Next slide. There are so many ways this could be a powerful tool. Next. Public art can open a dialogue. It can, and it does address national and local dialogues of great importance. This image is from a mural by Jay Dura. It's entitled, "Am I Next?", and it's included in a DC outdoor exhibit called Murals That Matter: Activism Through Public Art, that was being curated by the National Building Museum. And since the death, the tragic death of George Floyd, street art murals like this, inspired by social injustice, have sprung up all over the United States. By embracing and encouraging this type of socially motivated art, a city and town can reveal a great deal about their values and provide a space for much-needed community dialogue. Next. Public art and public artists play a very transformative role in creating an emotional connection between people and their community. They build social networks. They create and connect people. When a community participates in planning and then constructing a public art project, some wonderful things happen. Strangers become neighbors, and they have a shared vision, a shared identity, and then that creates social cohesion, and that encourages greater equity representation. It's a win-win. Next. One of the things I love about public art is it can transform something that's boring or blighted to something that's wow. These images come from Philadelphia, the Philadelphia Painting Project, which is a city-funded program that uses murals at a grassroots level to transform the community. The residents are led by a public artist, to a professional artist, to actually do all the work. So the community that lives there is involved in recreating these spaces. Not only do they create a real sense of pride and identity, but when you start doing public art like these murals, it reduces graffiti. It makes it a little bit safer in the neighborhood, and it encourages local economy. So this neighborhood found that once they started these murals, people from outside the neighborhood came and spent their money there. And so business picked up, and when businesses picked up, new businesses moved in. So it had a wonderful kind of ripple effect. Next. And public art can put some there, some wow, in a place. This is a surface mural in Station North Arts and Entertainment District in Baltimore. It's just a running your mill intersection, but now it's a wow intersection where people want to meet and they want to gather. It draws your eye in. People look for a place to come together, and it provides a real sense of destination. And this can actually help grow your economy and grow visitation to the area. Next. Another thing that public art can do, another power that it has is safety. Once you put public art somewhere, there are usually lots of lights around it. This is an example from the Paintbridge Bridge in College Park. This was a bridge that pedestrians were going over and under at night, bicyclists. It was very dangerous. So rather than just putting a bunch of utility lights up, the city of College Park brought in an artist to create this light display, which is above on the top side of the bridge and also underneath. And they did it for two reasons. One was safety, but the second was to enliven the public space, stimulate community revitalization, and attract visitors and investors to the area. This is a programmable LED light show that can change and do fun things when the university has something fun going on, like a football game. Next. Lastly, public art can really fuel economic growth. Commercial developers use public art to create a unique experience that will attract shoppers to spend their money. In 2000, the Peterson Company installed the neon light and the mosaics you see on the left in downtown Silver Spring. I spoke with someone from Peterson, and I asked them, "Why public art? What is it that makes it so important to what you do?" And she said that public art helps create a distinct identity for a commercial district. All the money that gets spent on public art drives traffic to the commercial district, and that drives spending, because people want to hang out here and have something to eat and meet their friends. Now, 20 years later, Peterson is taking out the splash pad and taking out the mosaics from the grand staircase, but they have not forgotten the power of public art. And the image on the right is one of the new murals, and it's huge. It's monumental. I don't know if you can see the tiny little artist standing in the bottom-left corner. They're using these enormous murals to attract people to downtown, and they are stunning. Next. So I'd like to talk to you tonight about transforming Gaithersburg, and specifically, this 355 corridor, including Old Town. So from the I-370 overpass where 355 and Shady Grove come together, all the way down 355 to the northern limits of town, about where Game Preserve Road is, and then, of course, Old Town. Next. So let's just take a look here first at your first impression, a gateway to Gaithersburg. There are a lot of different ways to get into Gaithersburg, I discovered, and many different kinds of paths in and out, but this is one of the main entrances. And it leaves a little to be desired. It's got a lot of stuff going on, and sometimes the landscaping is overgrown. So it doesn't inspire when people come. It doesn't say, "You're really coming into the greatest city in the world, Gaithersburg." Next. And if we kind of keep going up 355, you go across the Father Cuddy Bridge, and there's that kind of rusty chain-link fence, and even further and further until you get to the most northern city limits, and there's that tiny little sign that you see. So it seems to me that we are missing an opportunity that our public art program can give us to create more of a wow experience and turn these gateways into a place that truly tell our story and say how incredibly vibrant a place we are. Next. Let's take a minute and look at the heart of Gaithersburg. That's Old Town. So if you're riding on the Mark train, you've come up from DC, and you're coming in, you pull in on the Mark train to this darling, charming little depot. You can see the mansion, the former mansion that is now City Hall. Soon, you'll be able to see this snazzy-looking new building, and you think, "Wow, this is kind of nice." Perhaps you even notice that there's a concert going on at the pavilion. But then you cross Summit Avenue. Next, please. And then you see this from the train. You see the backs of buildings. You see parking lots. If you're driving or walking and you're going down East Diamond, you sort of see mismatched architecture and crisscrossing utility wires. We are not telling our story the best way that we can. We, the city, can do a much better job of expressing our values, our identity, our character, our diversity, and our liveliness that we know is there through public art. Next. Here are some ways that we can actually change the perception. There is a sometimes real, sometimes perceived in perception that there's not as much investment in Old Town, but that's not true. You think about the creation of Gaithersburg Station, the crossings, when the Fishman Site comes on board. If you think about the $2-plus million that the city has spent on the interactive water feature and the plaza, as well as 16 South Summit, we know that there is great investment there. But perhaps just because things are not quite together yet, there's not a real sense of brand, you're not able to see that. You can't see that, in fact, when I first came here, I heard that it wasn't safe to go to Old Town. With all of the people who live in downtown Old Town, I think it's probably very safe. And restaurants are there, and it can be an active place, especially in the summertime, when we have evenings in Old Town going. And there are so many things to do there, and attractions, the concert pavilion, the museum, going to Constitution Gardens, just a lot of fun things to do, Griffith Park, and the restaurants. This is La Casita, but there's so many more. We can put our public art dollars to work, to showcase our city, by creating something called a new aesthetic brand. Next. So just to kind of reiterate, we're looking at the gateway to Gaithersburg, the new municipal building at 16 South Summit. I'd like to talk about doing a community mural program that really engages the public and creates excitement. And then the fourth project is the Old Town Art Project, sometimes also called the Y Street Project. I'd like to talk to you tonight about helping us brand Gaithersburg as progressive, diverse, and inclusive community it is. Some of these projects are already in the CIP. Some would be coming online in five to 10 years. We're looking pretty far out, not trying to do anything right away. Some of the things that... Well, let me just go on to the next slide. And, and actually, next, Brian? Thank you. So I'd like to talk about what a gateway could be. And this is one of the artists who applied for the Old Town Project. She's a finalist, Vicky Scurry. This is in Arlington. So she has created on the bridge span, a metal grill that has images from the Dogwood Tree with a programmable LED light behind it for nighttime interest. But during the day, you can see that the retaining walls are embossed with images also from nature. So this is the kind of thing that we could do right there at I-370. Next. And the underpass, this could be a great place for a mural. Brian, I believe you said that we have to have the name of Gaithersburg on whatever we do. So here's an example of a mural. And again, we're looking at local artists-led murals with community engagement. Next. One of the things is I ride down 355, I see all these medians that kind of have overgrown vegetation. And in talking with Tony Berger, we've been sort of trying to brainstorm breakaway art that you could put in some of those medians, so that if someone crashed, as people sometimes do into medians, that the artwork would be safe. It would just crumple. But looking to create something that goes all the way down in some way, down 355, until we get to Game Preserve Road, and then we could have something much more impressive for our exiting and then that northern entrance into town. It could be something light-oriented like this. This artwork is by David Dowquist, who's the other finalist for the public art project at Old Town. Next. Then let's go back to Old Town again, the heart of the city. So the oval, the orange oval, is where 16 South Summit is. The square is the plaza where the Gaithersburg Museum is. Down Diamond, over to the big rectangle, which is the Father Cuddy Bridge. This is the area that we'll be talking about. To begin with, let's start with 16 South Summit and what's going to happen with it. Next. I would like to use and recommend using the hallways of 16 South Summit as a place where art can be civic dialogue. We have an exhibit up at the Activity Center right now called Why I Vote, and it's a great example of artist civic dialogue. The three images you see here are some of the reasons why people go to the polls to vote. They're interested, and they believe in democracy. They want gun control. They're interested in the climate. These, if you haven't seen the exhibit, it's quite moving, many different perspectives. We can use this civic dialogue, perhaps taking the "I Am Gaithersburg" census theme and inviting local artists to create artwork for that, that would be installed in the halls of 16 South Summit. A municipal building is for the people. It is a place where important conversations occur that impact everyone's lives. So we have the opportunity to continue to explore important national conversations. The funds for this project are already in the CIP, and there will be a call for artists in the not-too-distant future. Next. Our most ambitious project, though, is the Old Town Street rebranding. That's going from the plaza to the Father Cuddy Bridge and utilizing motifs and colors and materials all the way along this, this area. So beginning with the Old Town Plaza, we will have work done on the interactive water feature, but during the winter, those fountain heads actually have programmable lights. So with the right kind of covering, such as these circular balls that you see in the bottom, we can actually do something all winter with fun lights there. The mosaic fin you see on the side of this building is something that the fisherman Ellisdale is interested in doing at the Fishman Site, along with a mural at the staircase. Next. As we walk down the street, we've got the Skywalk, the garage, and the tower. Terrific spot for doing some neon, some interesting light things happening there. Next. We have the wall, which first got us started on this wonderful process, and it's a great place for mural. You can put a mural on a substrate and attach it to the wall. It does not actually have to be painted directly on the wall. Next. Or perhaps we're going to look for something where we can create a gathering space, where you can see it from the train as you go by, so that you'll say to yourself one night, "I think I'll stop and have supper tonight in Gaithersburg before I go on home." Next. One of the great things that can happen along the street is the use of mosaics and different kinds of benches that kind of continue that sort of the theme. This is one of my favorite spots right here, where Uncle Don Jorge's is, and there would be a perfect place to do a mosaic planter right there that kind of continues the whole look and feel. Next. This is the Father Cuddy Bridge, and we've been talking for some time about doing murals underneath there. I have a mural partner who would like to work with me. The partner comes with their own money and their own middle school students, so that it would be a terrific partnership to begin working here in this spot. The thing about this process is too, that it is going to be, it is in alignment with the Old Town Master Plan and some of the, the Old Town, oh, sorry, the Old Town Master Plan and the development goals for Old Town. It will bring people. It will create destination. It will create gathering spaces, and it will help fuel the economy. Next. Perhaps this is the last piece, you know, the top of the Father Cuddy Bridge could be this wonderful place for light art at night. Next. So who's going to do this work? Well, I said earlier that we want maximum community engagement. To do this, there are many ways that we can pair a local artist with students, volunteers, community groups, to create something. The murals, for instance, they're a terrific opportunity to put together people with different artists and create wonderful, exciting things. The artist civic dialogue is something that we can release to community artists. We don't have to go far away. For the larger projects, we generally need to have an artist who has experience working with transportation utilities, engineers. They have a real understanding of very complex structural programs and projects. But with the community civic artist dialogue and with the murals, we don't need that. Local artists can fill this, this need. Next. So here are two finalists, David Dowquist and Vicky Scurry. They call me all the time. They are really ready to come and see what we have to offer. They each have different skill sets and have a different aesthetic, but both of them are very experienced. They've done street work and transportation. They've both worked in Maryland and in the DC area quite a bit. So either one of them would be good. I'm working towards writing a grant from the Maryland State Arts Council to pay for having them both come once we get out of COVID-19, so that they can walk around and get ideas and then be able to give us some designs. Next. And then the how. So in the CIP funds at the moment, we have money for 16 South Summit. We have $493,000 for Old Town Art Project. We have $70,000 for our banner project. Now, this is the reduced budget. You will remember that the public art budget was reduced last year in May by $140,000, and no new projects were approved, so that we could help ease the pain across the entire budget. I've been looking for other money, and as I said earlier, Ellisdale would do something at the cost of $5,000. There are two grants from Maryland State Arts Council that total $25,000, and you can get them for almost each project. I have a mural partner, as I said, who has $10,000, so we can get started on that. And the NEA has several grants going from $20,000 to $100,000. It takes a while to get an NEA grant. It took me four years to get one in my last job, which is pretty good. So you start writing your NEA grant this year, for instance, and in about five years, they give it to you. That's how NEA seems to work. So one of the things we want to do here is leverage our CIP funds with other contributed and public art funds, developer monies and grants, and maximize our opportunities. One of the things that we have right now that's an opportunity is that we have an in with Maryland Department of Transportation. We've talked to them about the Gateway Project, and they're very excited. They were really excited when College Park did their light program. So when I said, "No, we don't want a sign. We want something like this," they were really excited. But that opportunity wraps up at the next gubernatorial race. So we will not have that opportunity past 2022. So right now is the time to leverage that opportunity with our current CIP funds. Next. So this is the recommendation from the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee and from staff, is to, in FY21, shift those funds that were for the Old Town Art Project over to the gateway and maximize our use of that window of opportunity. Bring the artist in, decide which one we want, get the plans and the pricing to MDOT, so that we can get going before they can say no in 2022. The municipal building is ready to go. All we have to do is release a call to artists, and then that will be ready to install when the building opens up later in May or early summer. And then we'd like to, in this year, develop a community mural program, looking at key spots. We also have that in with Maryland Department of Transportation. So getting under the Father Cuddy Bridge or the underpass over at 370 is our opportunity is now, working with MDOT. Next. In FY22, we would be well on our way to the design process for the gateway, and we'd be able to get started with our community mural project, at least the very first one in FY22. The kids will be able to be getting back out and working with artists. Right now, there's so many restrictions, we can't actually match the kids with an artist. Next. And FY23 is as far as we want to try to project. The Gateway Project could be concluding. It might still be going. We'd be working on the second project, and then it would begin, be time to start thinking about this streakscape revitalization. What we'd really like to do, the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee and staff strongly recommend the development of this long-range public art strategy that leverages what we already have in CIP funds, and it maximizes the opportunities that are presented to us right now, so that over the next five to 10 years, we can use public art to transform Gaithersburg, that Old Town area, the 355, the gateways, in a way that really reflects who we are, a vibrant and character-driven community. Thank you. Next slide, Brian? If you have questions, and I hope that you do, I'll do my best to answer them, and if not, I'll get back with you on the answers.
Thanks so much, Shelley. I can't love this presentation. I can't overstate my love for this presentation. And actually, it, it kind of makes me a little nostalgic, because we were going to have this work session in early spring, and then COVID hit, and we deferred it. And, you know, here we are, and we're still in COVID, unfortunately, for a lot of reasons. But I'm glad we're sort of getting back to this conversation. I think some, as I see it, some of the headline here is that before COVID hit, we were really sort of on track to... we were really sort of on track to move forward with something at the Y site in Old Town earlier. And the recommendation at this point is that, given the uncertainty of the next budget, the next few budgets, and the expense of that project, and the fact that, well, public art plays an enormously important role in strengthening the sense of the community, as you say, and building this emotional connection, it's still hard to argue that during a period of crisis, it is the core thing that the city should be doing. And so I, as, while that, the idea for that project is near and dear to my heart, I certainly understand and agree with the recommendation, and that we sort of refocus our efforts toward the SHA project at the 370 overpass. That makes a lot of sense, too, because we have a lot of cooperation from the SHA now during this administration. And who knows if we'll have the same, that, you know, this administration's got a couple of years left, we don't know what will happen with the next, whether we'll have the same level of cooperation. So it makes sense to save money, at least defer the expense of the Y site. That all makes sense. I just want to make the case, I mean, this, to me, this is like, you know, you just sat up there and preached for a half hour to the converted here. The, right before COVID, I was down in Miami visiting family. And I, we visited this neighborhood that, when I was growing up in Miami, it was known as the Fashion District, and it was sort of in northeast Miami. And, you know, people worked there during the day, and there were, you know, there was, there was, you know, sort of an industrial area during the day. But at night, there was absolutely zero reason to be there. And it was, it was a little blighted, as industrial areas can get. And there were times where it was a place you didn't want to be walking alone, or, you know, there was some crime there. But about, I want to say 25 years ago, a group of developers who had projects in that area came up with this idea that they would, they would bring in some artists. There were all these walls in the neighborhood, and they would bring in these artists, some really top-notch artists, to do some mural-type things, whatever, you know, very, very creative outside the box type of stuff. And they would bring in some local artists to do some of the other walls. And they ended up rebranding this neighborhood as, it's called Wynwood. And the walls, the Wynwood walls have become just a very, very powerful destination. And it's, it's so revitalized that area that, you know, a place where you could get, you could rent, just, the rents were really low, there was no reason to be there at night. It's like one of the hottest areas in one of the hottest cities in the world. You know, restaurants open, it's jumping with activity because of these walls. That's, that's really the difference. And now, you know, the real estate's gone nuts or whatever. But it literally transformed an area. It's remarkable to see just how it did. So I fully believe in the power of public art to make a place, to distinguish a place, to build character to a place. I've long said, as the council members are tired of hearing me say, that, you know, it is the, you know, a city is just a collection of streets and avenues until there's a culture. A culture is what connects it and makes it, makes it a different place. And so I appreciate your creativity, your sort of entrepreneurial spirit about going after grants and being creative about funding opportunities here. Please, you know, Godspeed, and whatever we can do to help. I think it's incredibly important. I believe in the power of public art to remake a place. Who'd like to speak to this next? Mike, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Judd, and thank you, Shelley, for the presentation. I also want to thank the members of the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, who played a role in some of this for the last couple of years. I think we've got some terrific ideas here. We've been talking about this for a while. And I know my colleagues are tired of hearing me say this, but I actually, you know, one of the first things I proposed when I was first elected in 2005 was looking at mural projects in Old Town, particularly under the Cuddy Bridge, because we have these big concrete walls that would make perfect sense, perfect place for murals. And one of the inspirations was that, is a park in San Diego, underneath the San Diego, California, my original hometown, underneath the Coronado, San Diego Coronado Bay Bridge, which was basically a concrete, a farm of concrete girders and walls and bridge abutments and things like that. And what began as kind of a local graffiti spot became a world-renowned park known as Chicano Park, full of murals that depict the heritage of the community and have created a place there now that is revered throughout California, but especially in San Diego, as a gathering place for the community and events like that. So they created a place out of a wall, you know, out of walls of concrete. That, you know, I think so, that was kind of an idea that I had. And I'm, I was disappointed that we never got off the ground with this, but I think we have some inertia now. And particularly with this SHA project, I think this would be a good approach to begin with, if we really have, if we're really wired into this funding and the potential for it, and the support from SHA, I think, you know, we definitely need to look at low-hanging fruit to pursue this. But in particular, I'm very happy to see this discussion of a community mural project that has a larger scope and scale in terms of just looking beyond one or two walls, but looking throughout perhaps the Old Town area to create a sense of place, like we've tried to do in other parts of the city through our public art projects. So, you know, I have, I was the council's liaison to the Art and Public Places Committee, which has been subsumed into the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee. So we had talked about a lot of different things like that, about a sculpture walk in one of the parks, things like that. But I think there are some things that we can do right away, relatively keeping the economic situation in mind. And perhaps, I think there's some real community buy-in for some of this stuff, too. So I think what's important is that we have some energy here. And I think Shelley deserves a lot of credit for moving this forward. But we've had other people who've approached us about things like this. And I think there's an opportunity here to build a community of stakeholders that'll support these art efforts and help us create the places that we want to see in, particularly in Old Town, in our gateway to the city and along the main corridor, 355, at various locations from the south to the north. So very excited about this, very supportive of it. And I'll be interested in hearing some other options from staff on how we can manage to do this in our current budgetary situation and the current economy. But these are the kind of things that people want to see when you're kind of holed up, you've been holed up for a while because of the pandemic. You need to have places to go see that are outdoors, so.
Yes, outdoors.
There we go. So excited and very happy to be the liaison to this committee. They've done a lot of hard work and a lot of thinking about this.
Thanks, Mike. And I appreciate you bringing up the committee. I was remiss not to thank the committee in my statement there. Who'd like to, who has a question or comment? Okay, Rob and then Loriann.
I agree.
Well done, Rob. Okay, Loriann.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Shelley, for the presentation and sharing what is to come in the coming years, if the budget allows. I did want to ask about the artists that were selected and find out what the, was there a selection criteria for the artists? And if we've taken, I guess, inventory of past artists that have contributed to the arts in public places. I know we're always looking at equity, and I just wanted to know the diversity of our artists who have contributed. I know they're local, but wanted to know about there.
So for, in our public art, actually, Loriann, I'm not sure, because so much of the public art is older than my tenure here, and I don't know about the diversity of those artists. I do know that we had very good diversity when we did the call for artists for the Y site. We had 94 applicants from around the world, not just the United States. I mean, we had someone from Australia and the UK. And from what I could glean from looking at people's websites, you know, most people, you know, don't say, you know, I am this or that in their applications, because they want their artwork. But the ones, we started, like I said, with 94, and then we went down, I think, to 50, and then we went down to 29. And then we had a committee of people, including the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, and then we pulled in some other folks. Judd was there, I believe. And we went through all of the artists, and we had a set of criteria that was weighted on, you know, experience with large projects, originality, just various things. I can't actually remember it all now. And we ranked everybody, and then we went through, and we ended up with something like 19. We still had more to go. So then staff went through and started visiting everybody's website and looking at their work and trying to kind of understand. And then we had five, and then we did actual interviews, phone interviews, that staff did. And we ended up with two that we felt would be the best folks to work with. You know, that they had a great reputation for working with people in our area. They all worked in our area. So I was able to talk to their references, I called references. I talked to each artist, I said, tell me how your process is. And they're very, each is quite different. One is, David is a lot more, tell me everything about you, I just love new things. And Vicky's a little different. She's a little, she's like, tell me about your area. She's not, she doesn't want to hear from me personally. She's great. So we had a very rigorous criteria for selecting those two finalists. And those are for the large project, that's going to be roughly $500,000. So we need someone who's got that experience with large, engineeringly-complex projects. Now, the gallery, we have three galleries in the city, and those feature artists who are local and from the region. And there is a great diversity there. We invite some of our artists who are local to actually curate exhibits sometimes. And of course, we always try to do something for the different heritage months, but that is not the limit of our diversity. Staff have been extremely attentive to this and have gone out of their way to make sure that we have good diversity. But we're just not calling it a show about African-American heritage. We did one recently, you might remember, called Building Bridges: Our Global Roots. And that was people from all over the world who called Gaithersburg their home. And, and we have several artists, the artist who's the curator of the show Why I Vote is African-American, but she curated a show with many different kinds of people in it. So we really pay attention to that. We are very, very inclusive. I can't say that that's always been the case in the past with the public art, but with our galleries, I can assure you that's the case.
And so this is why I wanted to bring up this point, because this is a pretty big installation that will be at the entrance and the different entrances to the city. And so while we celebrate diverse artists within our galleries, this is something that's going to live on for generations. And so I'm glad that this is someone who is, you know, you found two people that are experienced in this work, but I'm just wondering if we were intentionally trying to diversify the pool and solicit diverse artists, or if we didn't know.
With the public art, I did not really know how to do that. I did not know how to look at that level of public art, which is different from an individual artist. I didn't really know how to find specific, because there are not a lot of places where you can advertise for public art. So again, you know.
Shelley, when we met about this, I think we also talked about the 370 project being, you know, there's both above, above-ground, the bridge itself, and then, you know, playing under, with the mural underneath, and that there's a lot of opportunity for partnership there. We certainly want that gateway to reflect all of Gaithersburg. And so I think it's important to us that, you know, that that's not just driven by the one artist. I think there'll be a lot of opportunities for partnership and even bringing, you know, bringing maybe youth into that project as well.
Definitely. That's one of the goals, is to marry the professional artist. And by that, I mean anyone in our local area who knows how to do murals, I would consider a professional artist, and work with our youth, either from the youth centers, from Gaithersburg High School, from the middle school, any of the after-school programs, so that the kids actually are creating the artwork that, as you say, Loriann, is going to be around for a long time. They'll be able to come back when they're our age, you know, and say, hey, I made this. And what a great thing, what a great feeling that would be.
Definitely. So if, you know, our Cultural Arts and Advisory Committee need recommendations on how to solicit more diverse artists, is that something we're working on or looking at other jurisdictions to see how they're doing outreach, or?
I will look into that. I have not put that on my radar in quite the way that you've said it, but I will do that. And I will bring that up to the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, which you may be happy to hear, we have a new member.
Very exciting. Okay. All right, that's all I had for now. Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you so much, Loriann.
Neil, go ahead, then Ryan.
All right, thank you. So as, as you've heard from everyone else, thank you very much for the presentation. I was pleased to have a chance to preview this presentation with you, I don't know, eight years ago, before COVID.
It was just in February. Oh, my gosh, it does seem like that.
Seems like a long time. But anyway, you know, it looked great then. I mean, even pre-COVID, the price tag is significant. So I'm glad that you've been able to be creative about financing possibilities for this. But, you know, I'm very supportive of this. I was actually, my late first wife was in the art business. She was an artist by training and worked in the art industry and force-fed me a bit of an education that was lacking previously. So I think the ideas are great, and it would really, you know, some of the areas that you focused on for potential public art locations are exactly where we need it, you know, by the train, by the highway, at the gateways to the city. You know, and we've got a lot of artwork scattered around the city, and, you know, getting some real signature pieces would be the next great step. So thank you for all the good work. Thank you for the, to the committee as well, and, you know, keep it up. And we look forward to post-COVID conversations where we actually start moving the ball forward at a greater pace.
Thank you.
Thanks, Neil. Go to Ryan.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to echo what everyone said, particularly the mayor and Neil. I want to thank Shelley for your passion and your vision on this project. And like many of my colleagues, I was able to meet with you, what certainly seemed like years ago, Neil, but was many months ago, to get just sort of a preview and to get our feedback on what you and your team were thinking. And I also want to thank all the staff that was involved in your efforts and your preparation for this proposal, as well as the committee members and volunteers. I think you've done a good job being creative, recognizing the realities of budget prioritizing in this downturn and the challenges that we have for, hopefully, just the short term. So I appreciate the way that you've sort of moved the chess pieces around a little bit on the board with what you're thinking in terms of your vision to kind of break it up into segments that are digestible and doable through creative financing and through working with various partners. And I do think it makes sense to do it in the tranches, the way that you to do it in the tranches, the way that, that you've proposed with the 355 entranceway being essentially the first to, to deal with. It may not be the one that is the most glamorous perhaps, but maybe when it's done, it will be. But, you know, I, I think that it makes a lot of sense, given what we've talked about with our, our relationships with and approvals from the the state government and the administration at the moment, the financing issues. So I, I wholeheartedly support and endorse that plan. I did also just want to circle back to the comment that Lorian made about equity. And I'm glad she asked that question. And I hope we'll think carefully about how that factors into the way that we solicit artists, work with artists, work with others who are involved in these, in these processes. But I also think it's very important to acknowledge equity on the other end, which is that we are putting public art and investment in parts of the city where there may be more vulnerable populations or socio-economically disadvantaged populations. And I'm glad to see that this is a real concentration on, you know, the, the, a portion of the city that while we have made great investments in it and while we have despite other people's claims to the contrary, spent a lot of time and attention on trying to improve Old Town, that because of historic and geographic and other types of challenges have made it sometimes a little bit more difficult to make a noticeable difference. And I think the thing about public art and placemaking and branding is that it's something that you can point to that connects an entire community with a noticeable difference. And so from an equity standpoint, I'm glad to see that we're talking and focusing on this area of the city as a place to make a real statement about investment, public art, placemaking. So again, I just want to thank you so much for your work. I'm looking forward to turning this vision into a reality in some form or, or another, even if it's in pieces along the way over the course of a few years. Fortunately, I think the city, despite our challenges and despite our need to focus on some other priorities as well at this time, is in a good enough position to be thinking seriously and planning seriously about making many of these things happen. So that's the good news. So again, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I did want to say, just very quickly, thank you to, to Mike and to Nisha and Carolyn and Dennis for going over this slide presentation with me. And Carolyn's seen it so many times, she could do it by herself. So thank you very much.
Yeah, we thank them too. This would be the part of the meeting where I would call for any interested comments from the public, but I do not see anybody from the public currently in our Zoom room here. So at this point, it seems like there's a great deal of rah rah, we're, we're behind you on this, Shelley, and wishing you luck. And, and I'm, I'm sure all the council members and I stand at the ready to help in any way that we can.
Thank you.
So, so thank you very much. And if you have any final words, please say, speak now or forever hold your peace.
Let's get them.
All right, let's get them. Okay. And with that, I will note that we have our next regular meeting of the mayor and council one week from today, Monday, November 2. I will remind everyone that early voting is happening right now at Bore Park. So you don't have to go far, just go over to the Activity Center. If you haven't voted already, you can do it. And until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.